We're gonna bring the Finance Up Committee to order. We're gonna start out with purchase order and invoices, if anybody has any questions. Everybody all set? Tom, you good?
Yep, I'm good.
All right. Health insurance report?
Yes, the health insurance report year-to-date, it's a loss of ninety-four hundred dollars. May was a strong month, you can see we have income of five hundred thirty-seven dollars due to an increase in our income side. So we are looking to not have to touch our 4.9 reserve at the end of the school year.
As long as June is a good month.
All right.
I'm sorry Lynn, you said June was what?
As long as June continues to be a good month.
Okay, sorry.
I was just chiming in, sorry.
No, no, that's all right, I just, I heard the tail end of it.
All right. No questions on that, we'll move on to building and grounds, Tuttle School Playground and Farrarah Playground.
So the Farrarah Playground project is complete, they're having a grand opening ribbon cutting this Friday at nine fifteen at Farrarah School. They're gonna have a ceremony, each class will come out for some photos. They're handing out T-shirts that everybody involved in the process, they are excited to have their playground for the last couple of weeks of school and for the next school year, so just wanted to let everybody know about that. Have they got on that, Bob?
No.
The second piece is Tuttle School, that's the last playground that we have not done over for the schools in town. We had some pricing done, the playground, it's a larger, it bobbled, shed some light on the population and the size space of what's needed, but the price came in for a one-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars to a playground at Tuttle School. For some comparability, the Farrarah Playground after all was said and done, came in around a hundred thousand dollars, so the pricing is not far off compared to the size of the school and what's needed. Bob will, if you wanna talk about-
Yeah, I could expand on that a little bit, you know, there's a lot of concern sometimes about equity, and I just wanna speak to that a little bit. And sometimes when we speak about equity, there's this concept of fairness that comes into play. But what equity really is, is providing each school what they need, based on what their population is and based on the needs and resources that that school requires to improve student outcomes and improve opportunities for students. So if you'll keep in mind that Farrarah is a school of about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy students, grades three to five, and Tuttle School is a K to five school of about two-hundred, about two-hundred-and-seventy-five students. So there is a slight, slight increase in that cost associated with that Tuttle Playground, because we're accommodating a wider range of student abilities in motor activities. I do like the Tuttle Playground design, it was, it was hand-designed by the principal in coordination with his PTA, school staff, and my, my physical therapists and occupational therapists. So they, they did a nice job, I think, working out a plan that'll allow students access to really great muscle movement in a, in a safe outdoor space.
So to expand on that, you can imagine Farrarah was a three-five playground, at Tuttle we're gonna be K-two playground incorporated with a three-five, and they're adding a swing set in the back, 'cause there's capabilities in the back for that one-oh-nine price, so they're really getting almost-
Two.
-two playgrounds for the, almost the same price of what the Farrarah Play- Playground is.
Do we have the funding for it? Do we have the finances for it, or?
We have, we have the financing for it.
So that will come in the form of a budget transfer-
Correct.
-before the end of the school year?
Correct.
Where are we taking the money from?
When we do our budget transfers to close out the year, we will transfer it to the Tuttle Play, the project.
It's coming from the, the unexpended salary lines, where people, positions were unfilled, because we couldn't find people to fill the positions.
Or the turnover in positions-
Exactly.
-throughout the year, or the un, plus the unpaid days people's put in for and things of that nature.
Right.
So I wanna, I wanna talk about one thing, it's a little aside, but it's probably a good time to talk about it. Tuttle School, I noticed since the basketball court is new and re, and refurbished, on the weekends they're getting-
Yeah.
-huge crowds of people, they're setting up tents-
Correct.
They're having like a-
Like a tournament.
Like an event.
They're having weekend tournaments at the schools.
And I'm, I'm talking, I don't know, maybe there's a hundred people there, and they're setting up tents and they're turning it into a thing, which some people think that's nice.
Kind of liability standpoint.
But I know some people in the neighborhood, they're getting concerned, like, you know, what's going on over here?
Um, what did you say, was it happening?
Uh, basketball.
Bas- inside?
No, outside, at the new court.
That, that league, I believe, is advertised in the schools as well.
I noticed, I noticed that as well, RJ.
Like, I, I've seen signs in the high school to advertise that outdoor league, so I don't know if it's a townwide thing, or if it's-
I don't believe it is.
I haven't signed any flyers for a townw- town-
There's, I only noticed in New York-
So the Tuttle, it's the Tuttle Outdoor Court, there is, the Tuttle Outdoor Court was always an attraction, even from when I was growing up-
Oh yeah.
-because it's, it's a great spot to play.
Yeah.
But now they're, since the court has been done over and it's beautiful, they're using it, I think they've created an outdoor basketball league, is basically what it is.
But they can't use the, the town properties without permission, not town school properties without permission.
They should be paying rent.
Well-
I think it's a question of, is it our court, is it the town's court?
I don't even know the answer to that. But the thought, the thought I had here is, when you get a hundreds of teenage kids there, mostly males, what's gonna happen to that play area, that playground?
Correct.
I, I have a bad feeling about it.
So in conjunction with the playgrounds, it's an aside note, but we're going there. Randall and I have been going around assessing the schools for a security grant that's com- coming up, and all these new play, playgrounds will be receiving proper cameras in the right location specific, so we can get footage of our, all of the new ones, Deer Run, Farrarah, Tuttle will also be included. So with that, we will have some additional cameras out there for-
Yeah.
Will it stop any, you know, will it stop them?
No.
No. But I think from a signage standpoint, you know, we will be providing, you know, garbage cans out there to inhibit people to use them properly, rather than, our janitor there now is cleaning up water bottles, Gatorade bottles every morning on the basketball court.
Right.
So we're gonna add some cans there to inhibit people to throw their, throw out their trash. I, I believe Chris was saying the PTA, their piece, what they would like to fundraise for some benches near the basketball court, to kind of inhibit, to use it the right, the right way.
Yeah.
With the camera, that'll increase our security, but I don't know, we could have a conversation to see who it belongs to and what we do.
Just throwing it out there.
How far away from the building is? If our custodians are out there cleaning, it's giving years to pay.
It's, it's close.
It's very close.
Yeah, it's close.
It's, it's close.
It's close.
But they're not using it during school hours.
Yeah, but they'll say, no.
It's sim- it's similar to the basketball court that gets used at Overbrook, too, there's one there after school hours, and also some of the tennis courts here, you'll see people on the tennis courts and walking on the track.
Yeah.
We should clear that up, because-
Yeah.
Maybe if we can figure out who we use.
And especially if they're gonna leave garbage right now.
They can contribute a cleanup fee or something to that effect.
I don't know, I remember years ago-
Maybe just like an overall, sorry, maybe well, maybe just like an overall, like facility, either like a facility, like liability form, or some kind of waiver, because I'm more or less not so concerned about like the few bottles, like I, I think that could be done with even just a couple teenagers. I would say, just my daughter playing basketball, how many times her or her teammates have gotten hurt, so who's that gonna fall on? That's not gonna fall on the league, if they're not in official league, playing in that capacity. It's gonna fall on the district.
It falls on the town, because the, the facilities are-
Right, but well, I mean, essentially, we are the town.
Town owns, yeah.
You know, essentially, the liability is gonna fall regardless to East Haven, that's what I'm saying.
Is, that court was done with capital funds, correct?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
So it was a town project.
So maybe that's a conversation you can collaborate with town hall and just to-
I'm not, I'm not saying it because of the basketball court, I'm just saying, when you get hundreds of people around that blant, brand-new playground-
Yeah.
-it scares me.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
Is there any way that you can ask the-
From like a destructive or type-
Graffiti, drug paraphernalia-
Yes.
All the stuff that we had at Overbrook School, if you remember.
And some issues at the skate park-
Yeah.
-when it first opened, and things of that nature, yeah.
Is there any way that you can ask the police department to take a run every, every once in a while, you know, not to be as-
Yeah, so they are, they currently do that now, and I've learned that through the walkthrough that we did, Captain Dave Emmerman, myself and Randall, visited every building, did a walkthrough, evaluated doors, evaluated cameras, and, and entry points, so we can lock, get a list of what needs to get done from, from a security standpoint. So he's recommended the location of those cameras on those playground areas. We spent a lot of time like at Farrarah, because it's down in a gully, so we gotta get like poles out to certain areas, so we can maybe make sure that all our students are seen at all times, and they're not in like a blind spot because of a hill. So yeah, we, we could increase traffic, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that everybody, I'm always saying, I think everybody in town is aware of it going on.
Yeah.
Like, it's not a hidden, like, they're sneaking on, on the court, it's a publicized league, it's just a matter of who it-
Falls under.
Yeah, who it falls under.
I just think that whoever's the league, and whatever, you know, sponsoring this league should, like, I'm glad you're gonna put the garbage can out there, but it doesn't mean they get to destroy it, so that's more work on the historian to have those go out there and do.
I mean, I, I think it's great that they're actually able, able to play-
Yeah.
-and they're able to use the facility, so like, I don't wanna-
Great.
-make them think that they can't use it. I, I want that to be, I mean, that's why it's there, right? We want them, we want it to be used, but we just need to make sure it's treated fairly and we're, we're sure on, God forbid, some, some, something happens, where does it, where does it lie?
And if something happens, could something, and that's like, like Tom said, like the-
Yeah.
-playground and whatnot.
RJ, and I, I know I spoke briefly with you about it, but I just wanted to say, so that the other board members can hear, just so if we can just, if you can go back to, and when you assess the funding for the end of the year, taking a look at the schools that are already have playgrounds in place, and maybe like Overbrook, Mamawgwin, and although they don't need new playgrounds, but maybe just additional outdoor activities, 'cause I know like Mamawgwin was doing, paint, you know, wanted to paint their, that back walkway, 'cause they purchased their own playground, you know, prior, but just, you know, a few addition, additional things, just 'cause if we're, you know, the funding's going across the board, I'd just like to make sure each of the schools has the same amount of equity, you know, for activity-wise.
Yeah, and RJ did conduct a walkthrough recently with each principal at their school in preparation for making lists relative to end of the school year work, and/or sort of like a, a wish list for other items that, that they would like to have addressed, so we do have those types of things. I don't know if that was part of the list, but we can reach out again and see relative to, to playgrounds, if they can contribute any additional information.
The one thing I want to ask you is, is that some of the other, that's true, that , um, we have, they have, Tuttle, we talked about, some existing pieces that were supposed to take, so I think, I'm what you said, the other schools that have existing items, we can actually, in addition to, like, see if available to build on that, and we're gonna catalog too, the, the items that we can build on, or anything, but we're talking about taking apart the one that seems unsafe, that was all like, up on, you know, the shelf, kind of, that could be taken down, we also have the same, same, kind of, the loose material pieces, and we go down that, I don't know, we're gonna have to go through that option.
Whenever that comes down, if there's any useful pieces or structures that can remain intact, if another school would like them, they're ours, so we could move it there and create a little section for their playground.
The only thing I would caution the committee on, that you need to have someone who can, who is certified in the installation of that equipment, install it, because that, that can then become a liability issue.
Because they don't think for themselves, the standards, or just because of-
Both for the standards of the quality of the equipment and the installation itself is required, and the install, the installers themselves are specifically licensed to install playground equipment, and it's a, it's a separate certification lease, so it's a good point lease relative to, you know, some financial savings, but it's tricky. Please, do you know anything about the basketball league that plays at Tuttle?
I don't know about it, but it's just, they want things, they play about things, I don't really know much about them, uh-
Okay. There's a basketball league that's playing out there, I wasn't sure if you heard it from the bottom of my head.
Just people, parents call, I have a couple messages, like, what about the safety, like, four, five, or six, if you'd like, can I get back to you?
Please.
Yeah.
I remember, years ago, we did a survey of the students at Tuttle School, and I, I actually read through them, and I remember one kid, little kid, like, second grader, comment was, "Big boys play on our playground and they scare me."
Oh wow.
So, I don't know, maybe we say that during school hours-
For sure.
-that the campus is closed to outside people, I don't know.
Well, that's generally what it is.
I mean, maybe just proper signage, like-
I think that's, I think that's the unwritten rule.
Right, I, I agree with you.
It's fenced in right now-
Yeah.
So we can add signage where, you know, during school hours, it's closed off to the public. I think we have that at Deer Run.
Same as like our track, our track, even our track is closed off during school hours.
Well, you, you think it is, unless you go out there and you look.
Correct.
And guess what?
During school hours, huh?
Yeah, guess what you see?
People walking.
Yeah, and you know why that goes on, right? It's 'cause there's no guard at the shack anymore. And people come up here and do whatever they want, and no one's gonna go out and say a damn thing to them, so.
Sorry.
But I'm just telling you, I don't know if that's the best, best idea, but.
Move the chat or something.
Sorry about that, Chris. I know that's not even, it's on the agenda, but I think at some point that needs to be redis, you know, retalked about, some kind of coverage.
So what was the total amount for the Tuttle Playground?
One oh-
The, the proposed cost was one oh nine.
One oh nine, okay.
And that includes site work to test the soil, because it's an older play, older playground, they're gonna come out, test the soil, make sure they're, they're safe to dig and re, repurpose the area.
Yeah.
And that includes a contingency, I believe, Bob, you may know, three to five thousand dollars, so the actual, that one oh nine may come down lower if we don't need that contingency fund.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, so we'll bring that transfer then to the board at the next meeting.
Lisa, we went through those two things, you have anything else on buildings and grounds?
Thank you very much. I do not, I don't know, thank you both.
If you don't have anything, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, Tom, motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All right.
Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance, shall we?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for-
And justice for-
Melissa, would you do a roll call attendance, please?
Yes. Tia De Palma.
Here.
Jennifer Delongo.
Here.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio.
Here.
Tom Hennessy.
Here.
Tom Murtaugh.
Here.
Sorry, I thought that was me. Mary Ann Pellegrino.
Here.
Erica Santiago.
Here.
Jack Stacy. And Michelle De Lucia.
Here.
Hang on, look at it. Okay. All right, so, that brings me to my Chairman of the Board report. So as everyone knows, it's a really busy time of year, I want to encourage board members to attend any events that they are able to, but if not, I believe many of them are being, are going to be aired, right?
Recorded.
Recorded. Okay. Sounds good. And I do wanna remind everyone that even though we are towards the end of the year, that the district continues to work following state guidelines in, relative to the pandemic and the mask wear, mask wearing, since I know there have been some inquiries, and the signage that I have, I have seen on asking the board to unmask the children, please know that we do not have that authority. Also, I know that most of you have seen tonight, as one of our resignations, is Ms. Bovier, who I, I really just wanna say thank you for the time and effort that you put in, why you, why you have been here, and you're gonna be really missed, really missed, but congratulations.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Lynn.
And lastly, I wanna let everyone know that I'm hoping on Thursday, June twenty-fourth, we will have a workshop where the Superintendent will give her end-of-the-year presentation, following at seven PM with a special board meeting to conduct the Superintendent's evaluation and vote on her contract extension. If anyone has a scheduling issue, to let me know as soon as possible, otherwise it will be Thursday, June twenty-fourth. And that is all that I have right now. Subcommittees.
Sorry, before we go into subcommittees, I just want to congratulate Erna Sis Shualo. She is a teacher at Farrarah School, and tonight she is celebrating her retirement dinner, fifty-one years with East Haven. She started in nineteen seventy, seventy-one, and commuted from Killimore, Connecticut, every day to be at the school by seven-ten, I was told, everyday prompt, and she, thank you very much for all the years she dedicated to East Haven, fifty-one years is an extremely long time, so thank you for that.
Wow, that is a long time. Are they listening to the retirement?
It's not, but I was asked from a close family friend, they said tonight they're celebrating, and-
Oh, okay.
-that, you know, just to give her a mention, so I think that's great, so.
One of the longest tenured teachers.
That's amazing.
Fifty, fifty-one years.
Wow.
That is absolutely amazing.
Really, really unbelievable.
Just, just to speak on that, I know Melissa has a, Melissa, I know you have many, many things to do, but I'm wondering if there's something we could put together in regards to keeping track of individuals that will be leaving us, maybe we could do something nice, some sort of presentation or something, just for the future, I mean, you spoke so highly of this woman, and all the accolades, whatever, if they have or they don't, but what they meant to this town, I think it's pretty important, maybe we could put together some kind of schedule?
I know there is usually a presentation in the beginning of convocation every year on those who have retired, am I correct with that?
Don't they just speak their name, though?
Yeah, no, yeah, it shows their picture, right, and their information, it's actually really nice.
Yeah, and where's that?
It's, it's at the start of convocation every year.
Mm-hmm. I just don't think a lot, a lot of people see that, that's all.
And in the past, we also have done a retiree celebration-
Yeah, yeah.
-prior to the board meeting, we remember we were having a year, and we invite them to come to our board meeting, and give them certificates, and talk about their years of service.
Could we do something like that again?
We can certainly provide that, you know, for winter shutdown, we're, we're happy to do that, because we are not too busy to, to attend.
I think it was done every year up until last year, right? Yeah. 'Cause I remember there would be a cake, right?
We did stuff here, and everyone, I just think that, in a, in a setting like this, people are aware and they see it, opposed to the convocation, I think that's also-
I think it's good, I think it's a good idea, a good idea. Yeah, no, it's nice, they come in, they do all the new hires with the pictures and the environment, it's cute. Okay.
I would also like to congratulate Lynn on your director-level position with your new district.
Thank you.
You're very deserving, and we're gonna miss you tremendously, you've done a lot for our district over the past several years to move us forward, and so congratulations on your promotion and your new position in the new district.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yep. So. Subcommittees, I'm gonna, well, community outreach, I'll start with that, I think that retirement would have been, probably, suited.
Yeah, it could've went there.
It could've went there. Anything else in community outreach?
Yes, community outreach, I also wanted to maybe for the next meeting, come up with a community outreach, subcommittee meeting, I know some families have addressed concerns with the upcoming school year, and possibly adjusting our dress code, so I'd like to visit that, and if anybody else has any input they'd like to put in for that subcommittee, I'm more than welcoming.
Yeah, I'm gonna actually chat.
Yeah, I'm gonna see for the next meeting.
Next meeting. I wanna talk about the possibility of maybe some focus groups with some of our students, just to get a read on how things have been going throughout this past year, and just see what we might be able to look at.
Absolutely.
I also agree with that, I think it's really, regarding like the groups and stuff, we were talking about it on another level, regarding the involvement of parents, you guys, before having some parents involved in some of the groups, getting some feedback?
Yeah, absolutely. And I know Julie, with one of the parent groups that we worked with the policy, there was a great, there was a great, a number of parents from each of the schools, which was nice, so I could see, we could touch base with Julie and maybe get that, that parent forum in place, too, to help work on the policy.
Yeah, that's, that sounds great. There are many parents have such positive feedback, it's wonderful, taking it involved, yeah.
That'll, that'll be time well spent on the twenty-second, discussing all of this.
Correct.
All right. Anything on po, well, policy, you kinda put that-
Yeah, it was a collaborative.
It was a collaborative.
You're welcome.
It was a collaborative.
So you're talking about the policy, the dress code policy?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, personnel?
Um, nothing, we're off right now.
Okay.
We have some hires.
We've been negotiating, waiting for the chat.
All right. Buildings and grounds?
I know RJ began a little bit about the, the playgrounds, but the Tuttle, Farrarah on-site agenda, I'm not sure how far you got, you know, I came in late after my fall.
Yeah, the Farrarah ribbon cutting is this Friday at nine fifteen. If anybody would like to attend, I'm sure Paul would welcome we all. They're gonna have a, the kids are gonna come out for a ceremony, each by class, take some photos, and they'll be enjoying it for the last two weeks of school.
I just wanna not congratulate, so many parents are so happy, I've gotten emails, gotten phone calls, they're so happy, and I think it's really important to show that. Just to show that it's a wonderful project, and now that's come to full fruition, everyone's waiting so long time, I think it's beautiful, along with the new beginning of Tuttle, but the parents are really happy, so I just wanted to say thank you.
All right, and Tommy, any-
No report tonight.
Synopsis? No? Okay, all right. That moves us on to the Superintendent's report.
So I am going to turn it over to Jen in the Assistant Superintendent's report, who has a little bit more of a lengthy report around social, emotional, curricular updates relative to some of the programming and initiatives next year.
Jen?
Thank you.
Erica?
I'm gonna make sure my microphone is on, so everybody can hear me, and I just wanna sort of start by talking about this word, right? We throw around acronyms, SEL in education, but I guess I'd ask folks just here and at home that are watching, has anybody ever experienced a challenge, meaning, managing their time, being at meetings on time, or having employees that need help dealing with a tough situation, navigating drama in the workplace or, or in home? Regulating your emotions when you're in a situation that's making you feel uncomfortable, right? So adults experience these things in their workplace, just like our kids do, and so this buzzword, SEL, means sort of a lot more than what it sounds like, right? It's, it's the competies and competencies and strategies that make it more likely for students to succeed. So actually, studies have shown that kids, a good predictor of, of later success, a better predictor of later success is students' ability to regulate their emotions, that's an even better predictor of future success than IQ. So, we want to make sure we're enhancing our academic programming and our curricular needs through explicitly teaching some of those skills that students need to be successful academically, and increasing pro-social behaviors that will lead to better school connectedness, school climate, and just reducing those negative feelings that many students have had. And many families, I've been fortunate to speak to, over the course of the COVID-19 epidemic, have reported really great gains for their kids in terms of self-advocacy, thinking about goals, of managing their time, and others have, you know, been typically very well-performing students who, without that framework of school, really struggled with some of those skills. So I just wanted to frame the conversation, and I'm talking about SEL, on like, what is that? It's really those skills that help you be a more employable person, a better civically engaged person, who can advocate for the needs of your community when you grow up as an adult, and it helps you manage the things in your life, in school, to be able to attend to the academics at hand. So that said, just a little bit of history, what we did this year, and I know there's been some questions about the grant, so we're fortunate that this coincides with additional grant opportunities, but this was already sort of something that was in the works. We have, you know, usually it takes some time for us to engage in a curricular resource adoption protocol, so as we've talked about before, we don't go out to bid for curricular materials, it's not the lowest price, we're looking for the best, highest quality materials that match our local context, that would be usable for our teachers, that makes sense to us, that look like, meets our criteria. So we looked at several, what we typically do is we look at several, based on a criteria that a committee of teachers established, and so I am presenting this, although we'll have a more sort of longer presentation at the Curriculum Advisory Council on June 22nd, I invite anybody to attend. Julie Church and Janine Fiorillo, who are the SEL curriculum team leaders, worked with a team of many individuals, including social workers, kindergarten teachers, kindergarten two teachers, three through five teachers, six through eight teachers, restorative specialists, counselors, interventionists, math coaches, ELA coaches, social studies teachers, science teachers, to be able to look at a series of programs that are designed to provide explicit teaching in these social, emotional skills. So again, that body of research shows that when you really teach it explicitly and systematically as a part, as an interdisciplinary part of your core curriculum, it can enhance student behavior, student academic performance, and there's some research citations that are right in the portal for you to look at, to kind of talk about, I'm throwing these words out there, but where does that come from? So there's some, there's some information there for you. The goals of this project were to help improve student academic achievement and pro-social behaviors, and enhance the school learning environment. This would be by implementing a guaranteed viable culturally responsive curriculum to support student growth, social development, and academic achievement, because they're really all, it's like a stool, right? If your needs in that area are not met, to be able to meet your regulation of emotions, you're not going to be able to attend to the math class at hand. So a committee of these K-8 teachers went through the process of reviewing a curricular resource using our protocol, which involves getting, you know, the vendor to present information, they reviewed and vetted the information on a rubric tool, where they sort of measured the different components, like if it's going to be easy for teachers to, do they have our professional learning component? Would it be student-friendly and engaging for kids? Does it meet our academic criteria? Would it be feasible in the time allotted to this program? So they included resources that were only those highly rated by impartial evaluators, and so we looked at those kinds of offerings that were, that had a research base, that someone's had studied and said, in the context where, that's similar to our context, this worked for groups of kids, and there's statistical significance to say that that improved outcomes for kids. And so we looked at that, we had some initial meetings where they identified their criteria, and they selected programs, then they reviewed and analyzed feedback, there were a number of focus groups held, and I know, spoke to students, staff, and family members, and then they finally compiled a final recommendation here. And so I'd like to thank the members of that committee, whose names are outlined on the document that I've shared in the drive for you. So the other products that were considered were Choose Love by the Jesse Lewis Choose Love Foundation, and the Seven Mindsets Program. Both were very popular with the team, but they felt that they didn't have the robust research behind that they had sort of improved outcomes for students, and that the options for Spanish-speaking students were more robust with the Second Step Program, which is the one that's being recommended today. Their criteria was that it would be evidence-based, it was, you know, appropriate for our local context, it had a variety of instructional methods that could be utilized, there was implementation supports, meaning like things that teachers could use to help them roll it out, or even measure, or look at their classrooms, or for principals to help, and that it was aligned to our vision of the graduate attributes. And so there's some additional, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but some other recommendations were that it was felt that having the similar product across the district would lead to fidelity of implementation, they had checklists and tools and things that would support the teaching. Writing, mindset and goals, conflict, and cognition in the brain linked well to the science, ELA, and social studies concepts that they're learning, so it would promote some interdisciplinary opportunities. There were strong options for English learners, and differentiation for all embedded within the program, and materials were available in Spanish. Additional materials are available to supplement summer before-after-school programming, and some of the course material really fit nicely with our PE and health existing content areas, that those could be used and, you know, put into that timeframe to sort of maximize the amount of time that we were able to use to support social, emotional learning. And teachers in many schools in East Haven have piloted some of the materials, and have had been fortunate to try it, and found them student-friendly, engaging for students, and developmentally appropriate. So our plan, we are committed to providing students with this, we do believe, and the research does, you know, support, that it will lead to improved outcomes for kids, including, you know, increases in the positive behaviors, we want to see reductions in the negative behaviors that don't adapt students well for the academic environment, and be an overall positive thing for our students. We're looking to work this year to provide rollout training, ongoing embedded coaching, and reflection, and we'll be having opportunities for some teachers to write curriculum, because again, as I say, this is a curricular resource, and so I use that word, that's important, it isn't our curriculum, our curriculum will be using that curricular resource and adapting it for our local context, and making sure that our teachers have time to sort of really reflect on the way that that's going to be delivered with fidelity. So I ask that you consider the materials, if you, if anybody has any questions, again, I will be attending the Curriculum Advisory Council, and we'll have a little more of a deeper dive into sort of the why behind the social, emotional learning, but I wanted to give you an opportunity. And just to kind of give you a quick sense of like, what would that look like, for example, in a grade-two classroom? So in grade-two, there's four units, each unit, so, you know, each quarter or kind of trimester, they might have four lessons. For example, at the start of the year, the unit in grade-two is called Skills for Learning, Being Respectful, Focusing Your Attention, Using Self-Talk, Being Assertive. So things like, I know I can get this test right, right? The things that we want our kids to do, that we're helping ourselves, training ourselves to do, as adults, as we manage our difficult daily lives, those are the kinds of things. And at the middle school level, again, the scope and sequences in the board packet for you, for the middle school and high school, and so, you know, at the middle school level, they may be talking about causes and ways for managing stress, or recognizing the best solution to a problem, or recognizing others' perspectives, and understanding bullying. Those are the kinds of things that students might have an opportunity to learn, and again, it's differently, it's different based on the developmental level of the students. So I take your questions at this point, if there's anything else you would like to know about this curricular resource that we are proposing to adopt, I would happily take your question.
Regarding the whole SEL, you know, it's definitely like a worldwide thing, like you talked about, but regarding the collaboration with our school-based health clinic, do you feel that it is a nice collaboration? You feel that we're able to, the resources are there for us, and we're able to touch on what we need to touch on?
I think it's nice because it gives a common language, so if the students are learning, like positive self-talk is something that might be discussed in a therapeutic setting. It's not necessarily, you don't have to be in therapy to know that that's a good thing to do, to give yourself a pep talk, but then students have a common language that they can recognize and sort of connect their day-to-day life.
Just talking about the whole anti-hate, and there's a lot of things that you really can work on with the collaboration, the groups that they're held and so forth, so yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Lisa, you make a good point, because I'm thinking that it will be important for the personnel in our school-based health centers who work with our students on behavioral health, to know what the program is, what it entails, and what types of skills that it's supporting, so they can reinforce those in their therapy sessions. So we'll make note to make sure that they're all very well-informed, and also participate in some of the training that we'll provide staff. But as you know, there's a direct correlation between the social and emotional well-being of our students and their academic performance.
Great, I'll add that into the notes here. Other questions about the curricular resource?
What are you guys going to use to find out if it works?
So there's actually a number of tools. One is, there's a social, emotional learning screening survey, so we have that, we're putting that into our assessment framework, that actually measures these competencies. So the kids would take a survey, try it three times a year, and it would report on, you know, the types of positive feelings and attributes that would be, you know, do you feel like you manage your time well? Do you feel like connected to your school? Do you have friends? Are you being bullied? Those types of things, so that's one measure. The other measure would be academic performance, so students who are more able to self-advocate, who are more able to manage their time, are going to have, improve their progress. So we have, we have those measures. We also have the vision of the graduate, sort of those competency measures, like in JMS report card currently, it might be like a habits of success grade. So students, we can look at if those improve over time, or if there's a group of students for whom that is not in quite the level that we'd want, we would notice that, and we would try to promote those students, you know, through the explicit teaching of these skills to help moving that forward. So there's a pretty robust assessment framework, I don't know if that's what you mean, or if like, at the end of the lesson, there'll be, you know, things that students have to...
I guess what I mean is, I'm getting concerned, I know there's so much change now, and so much grant funds, we're doing so many different things. For our board, we approve these things, and then I don't think there's ever a feedback where we, you know, like a year from now, do an assessment of, hey, Jen, did that thing work? Are there any changes for it? Should we get rid of it? Are we keeping it? Like, last year we hired interventionists. I don't know, did that thing, did it prove worthwhile? Is it, is it working? I don't know, we approve things, and we, they go out into the air, and we never, for me, I don't understand, did it work?
Well, I think it's important that, you know, when I, you know, when I roll out, or when our team works to roll out, we have, we have an outcome-driven sort of logic model. So if we put this in, we're hoping to get this out, right? And so usually, that's a five or six-year plan, because there's often an implementation process that has to be complete before we can report on actually whether something has been efficacious. So I would say we keep monitoring ongoing data during teacher-centered instructional data teams, the teachers might look at certain aspects of data, but we would see, I could say, sort of potentially down the road, like crystal ball isn't working, but if I could make a prediction, right, if I were a weatherman or something, I could say, we would hope to see if this program was working, a reduction in, you know, the percentage of students who are flagging on the screener tool, that Bob and I was just talking about, the screener tool that I was referring to, it's called the DESA screener, that said these children, there's a group of children in need of intervention, like that are struggling. So we'd see a reduction in that, and we'd also see an increase in students who are reporting positive behaviors. We'd also hopefully see increases in student achievement, chronic absentee, decreases in chronic absenteeism, increases in graduation rates, so those would be some indicators that would say, something we're doing is working.
Jen, I was reading other studies too, about the absenteeism, and just be able to keep a close eye on that regarding kind of how you can gauge it, and that would come back to just following up, maybe we could come up with some kind of timeline and grids, how we circle back to see what the numbers are and what the success rate is.
This could be something included in, you know, our three-times-a-year report, because we have the data at our fingertips, we're really always looking at it and thinking about it, so, you know, whatever is something that you're interested in reflecting on, we can certainly do that. I will continue to report out those types of things, and continue to add workshops or things as the board is inclined for me to do so. Yes?
I think, I hear what Tom is saying too, with, it's, there's so much that is put on every year.
So many things.
And it's not, it's the state mandate sometimes, you know, that you have to, many times, you know, they run the show, pretty much, and because we're a public school, you have to keep up to date with everything. I think, like you didn't hear maybe, and I'm not using it as excuses, but interventionists do work, if you can use them with fidelity and have them, but, no, I'm not saying we didn't, but COVID kind of put a damper in, right? It kind of made things a little bit more difficult, we had lack of substitutes, you know, we did our best, it's, right, I mean, to get, next year should be a whole new start for all of those initiatives, I would hope so, and, you know, I do hear what he's saying, though, because it almost seems like, okay, new intervention, or a new grant, or a new, and when they're five years out, it's hard to reflect back. So maybe we should some, at some point, go over the things that would benefit everybody to hear about the growth, like academic benchmarking, we asked for that, we, you know, this year, you delivered that. So add that to that, that place. My biggest concern with this is, and as a teacher, I mean, this has to be somewhat incorporated into your curriculum, but also, it's its own curriculum in many ways.
It is, it's its own distinct curriculum.
Yes.
Yeah, so I can speak to that a little bit if it's helpful. We will be having, sixth grade will actually have a transition year course, so it's called mindset, so they start, there's a 45-day course, it's one of the rotations that the material is covered in. At the middle school, it would be the sixth-grade guidance counselor. And at the middle school, seventh and eighth-grade level, those would be, actually, we partnered with science and ELA and social studies, because there's units that really kind of nicely tie in.
Yes.
So those teachers would partner with the seventh or eighth-grade guidance counselor and support those. In the K-5 class, like we, I really do want to sort of, it's hard to kind of help you picture everything that's going on kind of in the buildings, but the teachers and the committees are working incredibly hard to be really thoughtful, purposeful, intentional, and it doesn't sound like it, but slow on a process, so that it's coherent for kids, it's not just, because that's kind of not what we're about, right? It's like the state says we have to do it, so we're going to just throw it out.
No, that's not what you're doing.
I know that's, I know you know that, so the thought is that, you know, K-5 teachers, and we did go back and forth and kind of talk about different models, but that would be embedded, so if there's a social studies block, it would be embedded as to one day of the social studies block, because again, and like you heard, in second grade, there was four lessons for one unit. So in trimester one, you might have 10 lessons.
Okay.
So that would be taken, pushed into a social studies block, because many of these things are social skills, and if you think of the social studies standards, citizenship, working together as a team, all of that is very embedded. Some of the units in the middle school are more cognition and brain-based, so they might pull into the science and a biology, you know, physical science type of class, but we're really trying to make those connections very embedded and very purposeful for kids. We're still, we've still got a lot of work to do, but we're getting insight from our teachers, and it's really been helpful.
That's wonderful, I just think, this isn't a popular thing to say, but there's not a lot of time spent with time in the classroom to teach all these things that keep coming up, too.
Right.
I mean, we have to make the time, but we have to grow somehow, some teaching, and just some, our days are short, our periods are short in certain situations, right?
Yes, and so if you think about the advisory period, right? You can have an extended advisory period once a month. In the elementary levels, the morning circle time, those are great existing blocks of instruction where you can integrate some of the key components of these lessons into, and it's not like, you know, a lesson every single day, that's 30 minutes, it's doable, it's feasible, and the lessons are prioritized around a key cognitive self-advocacy-type lessons that allow kids to understand their emotions, self-regulate their emotions, which creates less disruptions in the classroom for the teacher, so that instruction can take place more coherently and continuously. It is the absolute foundation for academic success, and I know I've said, I think Jen alluded to it, but our kids' abilities to self-regulate and understand and have a good, solid social and emotional well-being is a better predictor of their life success than their test scores and their IQ. And that's longitudinal studies over 50 years with the same groups of kids, thousands of kids. And that's longitudinal studies over fifty years with the same groups of kids, thousands of kids. It is foundational. And if you match that up to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, when you look at safety and security and feeling good about oneself, it aligns. It's right there. You know, it's, it's really important. And so along with establishing really good routines in classrooms, developing classroom rules together, setting goals for themselves and our kids, comes all of this additional work and lessons through the program. We're just sort of streamlining it, working it into a standard program, and then adding some survey assessment tools to be able to collect some data on how kids are growing and what additional supports they may need or require.
I know this piece has just begun, but you feel like there's positive, some beginning progress? Erica, I'm sorry, I know this is, this piece has just begun, but you feel that there's like some positive progress beginning?
Yeah, and I think, you know, we've been doing these focus groups and forums with staff, students, in an effort to inform our back-to-in-person learning and continuity of services plan that has to be posted on our district website on the twenty-third. And some of the feedback from parents has been really interesting. Some of them are saying, you know, the masks, which I know we have no control over, right? It's a mandated thing. We can't say you don't have to wear your mask. But they do create a sense of disconnect. And they put distance between adults and kids. And that creates emotional distress for some people. And parents are expressing this to us in our forums. And as they're expressing this to us, I'm saying to myself, this social-emotional learning program is gonna help combat that a little bit and get us to a place where we can re-establish those connections. Even if we have the mask or not, we're still doing those lessons and going to try to create less distance and get kids feeling connected to the, to the adults. So, I mean, and that's just one very small example.
Regarding that example though, what are we giving them as feedback? Are we gonna be able to give the parents some feedback on what you just said? Like what your thoughts are?
Yeah, so we're rolling up all that feedback. It's getting written in a document that will be linked in our plan, so they can see the input and feedback that they provided us. And then the plan itself will reflect that, that feedback.
Erica, right there, that's huge, because they don't feel, so many parents will, they've called multiple of board members, and they'll say that they don't feel that there is feedback or there isn't that connect. So that's awesome, that's huge.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I cut Tom off.
I, they've been so incredibly insightful. Even, even some of the kids and the things that they're saying, it, you know, when you truly listen and you think about the programs that we're about to implement, I think it's a really good match, and it's going to, it's really going to address a lot of the concerns that they've been raising. Tom?
So this is kind of more or less like a, like a self-reflective kind of thing for the students, to find out emotionally how they're doing? And my concern with it too is that, unless I'm having a complete misunderstanding of this, aren't you, if you do find that students are having, you know, emotional difficulties, don't you have to incorporate maybe possibly having more social workers and that sort of thing?
Sure, sure, I can speak to that. So this is, this is a tier one, so like, we talk about classroom, the, when I use the word tier one, I mean like every single kid gets this, right? So it's not therapy, it's not, you know, it's, a good skilled teacher just inevitably will go around and be like, how did you feel you did on that test? So next time, what did you do to get that, those results? Like that's just kind of the nature of thinking about yourself as a learner, working with others in a community, those are the types of things as part of this work. And again, as Erica talked about, in small, you know, could be twenty, twenty to forty-minute lessons that are, that could be, you know, where kids get to talk to each other and work together, and work on problem solving. Then, if a student demonstrates that this is a difficult thing for them, that's impacting their ability to access their education, we might provide a tier-two intervention. So for example, a lunch bunch with the social worker, where you get to talk about making friends on the playground, right? You're worried about something. So that would be something where, not every kid gets that, but some students who have identified that this is something that would be helpful to them, they would be able to receive that. And then if there were students who again are showing, well, we want pro-social behaviors, but they might have behaviors that are impacting, they can't be in the classroom because they, you know, are feeling not emotionally regulated. They might be candidates for more one-to-one counseling. So those are interventions that we mark and we kind of record in our, in our, and see if those kinds of things, monitor the student's progress, are those working for them? Is that getting them to stay in class longer? Is that getting them to have more time with their peers and those kinds of things? So, so this particular component is for everybody. And sort of the idea is that the more we teach everybody, the more kids are gonna have these skills that many of us learned. You know, I had a, I could tell you like which teacher taught me certain things. You know, I'm very blessed to have great teachers. But this is a really, you know, helpful way to kind of look at the developmental sequence. And now we know so much more about the brain and how people learn. To help kids get that leg up on their learning by understanding themselves as a learner early on, I think will reduce the amount of students who will need those more intensive supports. You know, if this program continues to work as we, as we expect it to. We fully expect, and the research bears out that it, that in fact it has shown statistical significantly increases in those positive things.
And these classes, the instructions are gonna be incorporated into the actual, like you had mentioned, social studies or science or whatever.
There, it's its own, it's its own sort of scheduled subject within the school day, but as Erica mentioned, it may be during like a morning circle period. In some cases, where appropriate, the lesson may be really linked to one of our content areas, so we might use that time. But it would be scheduled, it would be part of the schedule. And so it would be, just like anything else, it's important. But if you, you can see the scope and sequence in the, in the drive. And you can see the number of lessons. So unit, like if there's, there's four lessons in unit one. So it's not, this isn't, you know, a thirty lesson, you know, whole entire, you know, it's just, we're introducing students and cycling them through, and reminding them over the course of their K-A experience too. That's the other piece that's important. When you learn things sort of recursively over time, it kind of sticks with you a little bit. Yeah, the Yale Child Study Center and the Center for Emotional Intelligence has been doing a lot of research around this, and they've partnered with the Department of Social Services and other key agencies about, you know, the, the emotions that, I'm looking at it here, and it, and it says that, the awareness around getting kids to understand their emotions and the critical role that plays in their learning, decision-making, academic achievement, and overall wellness. And so we're trying to, to bridge that together. And as Jen was saying, everybody will get access to this tier-one core instruction around this, but we know there might be different levels of more intensive interventions that kids will need. And we'll build in those structures through our social workers and/or work in therapy in school-based health centers and clinics. But what we're really hoping is, when you implement something consistent and thoroughly at the tier-one level with everybody, the goal and the outcome that you desire is a reduction in the number of kids who need those higher levels of interventions, because they have the skill set to be able to self-regulate their emotions, understand how, how they're feeling, and advocate for themselves and their needs and/or employ strategies that allow them to be successful.
Which leads to children with less behavior problems in the classroom, less, you know, because people are more connected as well.
Which is, which is good for every student, right? So they, they have peers that they can hold each other accountable, because there's norms in the classroom, you know, and so there's research that that, this program actually outlines, they've studied this program's implementation in various contexts, and they've found that those lessons that help teach students to recognize and identify emotions, I'm reading from their research summary here, can lead to improved attention, motivation, and academic performance. And so there's like a little citation that they found that in one of the studies that they're looking at. So, you know, just thinking about what, what we are hoping for is more students to have access.
No, I just wanted to say, just the training component itself, that, you know, I know we're focusing like on a lot of things, but maybe the training component itself, just making sure that our staff, they're, you know, they're completely focused on as a whole. Because, I mean, once the, once the kids know just that self-awareness, and, I mean, I, I know personally, you know, with my son, who's like, who knows, especially the, you know, behavioral versus just, you know, knowing like his misguided emotions versus-
Yeah.
You know, I, I know it's gonna, once they realize self emotion triggers and things like that, and they start seeing it, having the teacher fully, fully knowledgeable on it and being able to, you know, work it in on a day-to-day thing, I think it'll become a regular, and I think it will be very successful. But I think we really need to focus on the training aspect of it to make sure that our staff is prepared to take this on.
Absolutely. And they've, we've gotten great feedback on offerings like trauma-informed practices in schools, or, you know, identifying strategies, you know, to support emotional regulation, verbal de-escalation. So our staff is really finding those types of offerings very helpful. And so in the document, there's a bit of, you know, a very brief summary of our rollout plan. But generally, it includes not just one-and-done training, but ongoing embedded coaching, opportunities for, you know, leadership to understand what the look-for's are, not only in those classroom lessons, but in how we're interacting on the playground with each other. And so that they're having a shared language at the school level to then be able to redirect students, remember, you know, you learn-
Yeah, this isn't like a small feat, this is a huge undertaking. Like this is like the emotional component of this, just, I mean, they're taking on almost a, a social work aspect to it in addition to teaching. Because I mean, if you look at it, I mean, they're gonna be, they're going, these kids are gonna be self-assessing themselves at the end of this. They're gonna be learning their own emotions, they're gonna be learning, you know, all these things. So this teacher needs to be able to pick up on these things as well, if they're gonna be putting them in a tier-two and a tier-three, you know what I mean? To make sure that they're getting them the correct help, once they realize these things.
Yeah, I do wanna make sure-
Erica, this is a huge, huge lift.
Yeah, that's what I feel like, this isn't just a small-
And then, no, and it's not a one-year deal here. That's why the grant from the state is over five years, because there's multiple layers of training for staff from the very foundational level to more higher levels of understanding students' emotional needs.
Right, like with having the, you know, the, you know, the school-based health centers up, making sure that they're on the same page and everything, because I think it's gonna be a huge component, once you do get these kids, you know, with their self-awareness and things, because kids are very, very inquisitive, and they do know their own emotions. And once they have a way to express that, I think, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna see a lot of, a lot of positive feedback, and we may see some negative feedback, whereas, you know, there's emotional challenges and things like that, but we need to make sure our staff knows how to deal with that.
And I think it's important to know also that the team, there's a team in place, right? So the teachers are not, you know, they're, there's lessons and materials that they're providing, some time to talk and host, you know, lessons that are reflective. But there's a comprehensive team for, when students are flagged and identified. And they're, you know, the teachers are in consultation with social workers and school psychologists to sort of think about the profile and the kids, you know, who, who maybe need some support. And those, like the lunch bunches and those type of, of things are being delivered. And where possible, there's even social workers that can be pushing in to support certain lessons if a teacher says, I need some support. So we don't want, I, I don't want there to be the expectation that you, as a teacher, that you need to be a social worker to be able to deliver this. That's why this material is being recommended, because we feel that it's appropriate. There were some components of other programs that we felt that got to a place where it was, you would need more therapeutic training to deliver and have those conversations. Like we've actually, that was part of the conversation and process. So I think, I think that's important to know, that they are never alone in terms of having to support students. There's a team that's there. But yeah, it is a comprehensive, and everybody using that common language, and it's kind of embedded, there's a couple, there's a document in there of how it's linked to restorative practices, which is, you know, some of the other. So it's like, really important to note that it's all sort of a complement to a lot of the things that we've been doing, whether it's academically or, you know, behavioral interventions and attendance interventions we've been putting in place. It's all meant to complement, not be like another thing in a silo separately. It's all sort of connected.
Right, yeah, I don't think it would be that at all, it really needs to be just like inclusive.
What's really nice about this is that developmentally is appropriate at every grade level, right? Because you have kindergartners, even pre-K students, and you have twelfth graders, right? And developmentally, that's a wide range of frontal lobe development. So after three to five years, after we start setting some of those foundations, we're hoping to see the gains from this. But it's in a very structured developmental way where kids can truly internalize it and understand it at the level they're at. And then it builds upon itself, and then that common language is built. So it is, I'm glad you said that. It is not a snap-your-fingers-and-it's-done. It is by far a three-to-five-year project that's going to take time to un, unroll and roll out, implement, and then add layers as necessary as time goes on.
Erica, this is jumping the gun, but it's different districts that I'm in, like they even have, as far as like, we're talking about identifying and then putting them into the red flag area, and then they get referred to, or school-based health clinic and so forth. But there's like, each child like has their own productivity book where they write in daily, where you can see the red flags. And then even some kids do the video logs. I mean, these are things that, you're looking forward, I know this doesn't happen anymore, but these are things that are huge, and that comes with time, comes with self-awareness. And then as that team comes into play, they can identify what needs are, so it's huge.
It's huge, absolutely.
And it's gonna be a huge plan that's gonna go for years on. But to begin here is awesome, and just the awareness is awesome, so.
I'm scared.
Thank you.
I'm scared.
You're scared.
I'm scared. I see Diane, I see Diane come up here and give us a presentation. When I got home, I actually looked at it, you know, eight out of ten kids are below grade level. That was a second grade class. So five years from now, when your new program is functioning perfectly, they're gonna be in seventh grade. Are eight out of ten of them still gonna be below grade level? It's scaring me.
So a lot of students below grade level status has to do with attention, their ability to regulate their emotions, to be able to focus on the learning task. They're, they're, I don't, I don't mean to say that we're also not concerned, but it's a real component of helping students access their education. We want our kids to be able to read, we want our kids to be able to do math, we want our kids to be able to be in their classrooms and work in spaces in collaboration with each other. And we, we have to be able to support the students as they learn their skills to be able to receive that instruction.
I'm scared. Eight out of ten kids below grade level.
It doesn't mean that we're, you know, setting aside the academics and what we do relative to our core content areas and our interventions there. This is just an insertion of these type of skills to help on the behavioral side. When you look at scientifically researched-based interventions, and nationally, it's called Response to Intervention, RTI, it's a triangle. And the triangle has two sides, has an academic side and a behavior side. And, you know, a lot of places, we're always just focused on the academic side and never address the behavioral side. And research is showing us that if you don't address both sides of that triangle and respond appropriately, that it, it's not working. Because what's missing from the academic side is on the behavior side, and sometimes what's missing from the behavior side is missing from the academic side. And it works, and it works hand-in-hand. And I know, Lisa, that you know so much about this, and you hear this in schools all the time. So I'm, please.
No, I just, I mean, would, tell me what you're scared of. You're scared because you don't think that piece is being covered, where the, the academic pieces are being-
Eight out of ten kids below grade level. Listen, Liz, I'm gonna give you something to think about, an analogy. My gas station's failing, it's going bankrupt, and my manager says to me, well, that's because we got the wrong kind of Twinkies. That's his answer. Wait a minute, hold on. I don't think the brand name on the Twinkie is the driver and the functioning of that operation. And for eight out of ten kids to be below grade level, I'm just telling you, it's scaring me. It's really scaring me. I, I actually called Diane about it, I said, you know, am I reading this thing right? We can't have that here. Total school, it's nine out of ten kids. When I sat in that math class, it's nine out of ten kids. It's, it's not right.
So-
I'm scared.
This is gonna prevent and, and intervening with behavior, so to keep that from happening and continuing.
That's what all the research tells you. But I do think, I do think that if you don't address those individuals that are struggling, you're gonna have failing kids throughout the whole entire district.
So you want the different brand Twinkie, that's what you want?
So I don't, I don't think it's a-
I don't want them to have a different brand of Twinkie, but like you've been doing your job a long time, so have I. If you don't address that, if you don't provide services, I don't, listen, I don't, I don't touch your area normal, ever want to, but this one-
Eight out of ten.
Our teachers, you know, and our teams have been working really hard to sort of improve and, and refine and, and work through this pandemic. And I think it's important to know that we look at children as individuals. And so, you know, we also look at our curriculum as a whole and as parts, right? So a comprehensive school district that's offering a curriculum, we're preparing kids for the academic rigors of college and career. we're preparing kids for the academic rigors of college and career, and for civic life, to be participatory members of their community, right? That's the function of education. That's what we do. We do both. So we cannot ignore the fact that our kids need to grow up and be citizens that can show up for work on time, that can meet you, look you in the eye, say hello, if someone, you know, help be fair if something goes wrong, and read and write, right? And so when students are struggling, sometimes what our teachers do, and they're, in their process of the intervention team, or, or working to, to build those supports, classroom routines, interventions, or even just small groups where the teacher's already embedding that instruction, they look at the root cause of what is making that kid below grade level. Sometimes the root cause is a difficulty in reading, decoding. And that, that we are equipped and prepared to help shore up decoding. We have interventions that I can go over with you at some point if you're inclined, that would get at that root. It's like you go to the doctor. "I don't feel good." You don't give them a lollipop and leave. You, you, you figure out what's wrong, the diagnostic, right? So is it wrong that some, for some kids, the ability to regulate their emotions is what's preventing them from attending in school, for some kids? For some kids, it's more than one thing. So it's important that we have, we are doing both, right? We're preparing kids for their academic rigor of college and career, and to be members of their community, community that are successful. So I, I do take that seriously. I think our teachers have, if, if we look at, even in the last couple of years since I've been here, the teachers that are engaged in the small group instruction, fostering those, you know, deep conversations about language and literature, embedding their academic vocabulary, including academic vocabulary about neuroscience that's embedded in this curriculum. That's good for kids too, talking and using words that are, you know, disciplinary-specific. All of those things enhance the overall experience in East Haven Public Schools for kids, right? They learn and they grow, and their brain creates new pathways, and that, and that's, that's going to help. And so our student, our teachers are doing math, you know, assessments and reflecting on creating a tweak to the next weeks of lesson plans, because they can see that the data shows that this one item was some, there's some power in what our teachers are doing every day. And it does take time, and it is not okay that we have eight or nine or any kids below grade level, but we will continue to work with them and, and with your support, um, provide the recommendations of what we think would be beneficial to those students.
And one last point, I know we need, we should probably move on. But we also need to remember that the teachers, learning all this, they learn their strengths and weaknesses in social-emotional and teaching learning, but to, to empower them, they need to be empowered too. Because you're in front of, you have 25 kids, 28, 26 kids with all different kinds of needs. So you've gotta find a way to, to help each kid advocate for themselves and learn about themselves. But a teacher too, social-emotional learning is for, for the teacher, for the, for professional development, for the children. So they become better at what they're doing and identifying things. But they really will do better, once you can at least, you know, go take both sides of that triangle and make sure they can move, move ahead, move forward.
I know it's frustrating, Tommy. I just think it's a process, and I know you may not wanna wait and see it out, but you may not have an option, because I think that if we don't address these individuals that are in such need, then we're gonna just have, we're not gonna get the numbers you want. Children aren't gonna be successful.
Why, you're getting the numbers you want now?
I said, "We're not gonna get the numbers." No, actually not. You're so right. We're not. I just, I think if we identify this is part of the problem, that we need to utilize what we put together here as a plan and address it, instill it, make sure we, we monitor it, we gauge it, and then we move forward. But I know it's frustrating, and I'm sure it's, everyone feels it's frustrating as a parent.
I'm scared.
As a parent, I'm one of those individuals that has a parent, listen, that has a child that's not doing well. So I can also say that that's scary, but I also know that my child has mental health issues that need to be, um, dealt with and monitored and maintained, and you're not listening to me, Tommy.
Oh, I'm listening.
I just think it's important, but I do think-
Sure you do. You don't wanna get me going, do you?
I don't, but I think that what you're saying, but just hear me out. I'm telling you.
I've been listening to it for 20 years. The double-language arts block. You want me to start going? Cause I'll go.
No, no, I'm just asking you, just like-
You want me to go through all the initiatives?
I agree with you. So I don't think I don't agree with you. I'm just saying, this, this plan is, is an important plan.
Sure.
It needs to be addressed.
Sure.
But I just said to you, I have a child, like I said, and that's, or, we're making it public, so, but she's struggling academically. But I also know that she's struggling behaviorally, so I think that it will need to be addressed.
You can't pound academics into their head. It, it won't work.
I'm, I'm set on having her struggling as a parent.
We know what works. I mean, we, we know. There's, there's, there's a lot of people that have looked at what can work for students in communities, for families. And we, it doesn't take one thing. There's not a Twinkie. Can't give a kid a Twinkie and make it work, right? But we do know what works, and it is a slow and steady pace to be, to sustain it, because we do, as Erica mentioned, want to make sure everybody is provided the training, that students have a safe climate for learning, so that we can, this, we can move our numbers through the stratosphere, because our students will be safe and, and, and self-knowledgeable to be able to access their learning. If, and, and, and that's just good for our kids in our community. So I, I do stand by that recommendation that the committee put forward. I think they did good work. I think there was a number of teachers who thought really long and hard about the impact of this for their colleagues. And they speak for the, for the, the children in the buildings. Every building was represented on this team that went through this process. Um, Julie and Janine did a great job. Julie talked to families and, and did focus groups with fifth graders. Um, you know, it's, it's good work. I think it will yield results that are positive, and I think we can continue to revisit what tweaks we can make to see the more improvements that we want to see.
Thanks.
I think we all know, there's a new information, and we, we look at the central work of Voitski, right? Nineteen thirty-four, he basically stated that intelligence cannot even be understood without looking at social development. That you cannot even, you know, begin to address attention, memory, formation of concepts without looking at both inter- and intra-psychological, social development. So again, this isn't my area, so I'm not, I'm trying not to participate as much as I can in this conversation. But, um, Tom, if you'd like, I'd be able to take you through to that. It's like your framework for my dissertation is exactly on that.
On what?
So I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
On why we're only at-
No.
Two out of 10? I'd love for you to give me a dissertation on that.
Cause their needs aren't getting met, Tom.
Stop it. Stop it.
You have to want to understand, Tommy.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm gonna leave it at that. Again, I, I'm trying to stay off the topic, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
Can we move on?
You don't want to trump anybody else, Michelle. It's not about that. It's about that, my hands-on experience. Always everyone at this table, like Tommy's experience, always everyone at this table, and I'm sure you have the same experience. No one's trying to trump anybody else with what we're providing, but I think that this is something that is beyond needed as a parent. I know it. As a board member, I know it. As a colleague, I know it. I also know that I struggle with what Tommy said, not because my child, child's struggling. I have other parents that come to me that are struggling. So I just think this is a beginning, and we just need to be positive and go for it.
And I thank you, please.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. I'm, I'm for it.
Well, I think we're in good hands.
I think so.
I do.
It's not anything, like a new age initiative is what I'm trying to get at. It's something that's always been there.
I, I'm not denying any of that. What am I saying?
I know exactly what you're saying.
Do you receive it?
I, I, I do receive it.
I'm not crazy, right?
I do receive it.
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
But we know in order to address that, we have to address the whole picture.
You hope, but the whole can't have an infinite time horizon. We're supposed to be producing a certain quality product out of this place in X amount of years, right?
I wouldn't refer to children as quality product.
Well, you know what I'm saying. If we look at the portrait of a graduate, that's my term for quality product. Uh, you define it a different way, but we're supposed to be producing that. How are we doing? You can take all your theories and your nineteen thirties and all that stuff, but how are we doing?
How are we doing?
Yeah.
This is, this is where we want the lineup.
Oh, of course, that's where you want it. That's where I want it.
We all agree.
When I see things telling me two out of 10, Jen, all I say, all I say, one word, what'd I say? Scared. Scared.
So you could be less frightened now, because we're looking at-
I'm scared. I'm not less frightened. I'm more frightened now. More frightened.
Well, Tom, you have to open your mind to new learning here.
Sure, I do.
You do?
I, I have one thing to ask you, Tom.
You have to sit in on the fifth-grade class for these and set them out.
I sat in a, yeah, I sat in a fifth-grade class for six weeks, and I did a lot of learning.
Wow.
A lot of learning.
Just because you might enlighten me, tell me, maybe something you're thinking of that, I'm not thinking of, we're all not thinking of, it's a team.
What's that?
What maybe be a solution you could think of? What, what might be something you think could bring to the table?
Well, I don't want, well, listen, I don't wanna get off topic.
I'm just asking you, cause I don't know.
But if you wanna know, you catch me after the meeting, cause I know. All right?
No.
You catch me.
But, so-
I didn't read Albert Einstein in nineteen thirty-five, but-
It was not Albert Einstein. It was Voitski, and it was nineteen thirty-four.
Everyone should learn something every one, every day. No one's better than that, so I agree with you. And I'll be more than happy to listen to you.
If you're capable of learning, you do learn something every day.
Everybody is capable of learning.
And, and Tom, when you went to Tuttle Math class, I remember we talked at a board meeting, and I said, "Was it a curricular issue?"
No.
Was it an instructional issue?
No.
Was it a, a, a relationship issue between the teacher and the kids?
I don't think so.
Was it a behavioral issue of the kids in the class?
Absolutely not.
Was it, so curriculum, instruction, assessment, relationships, behaviors?
Yeah, so what did I tell you?
What's left? It was an operational issue.
That's right.
Not enough instruction, Tom.
There you go.
What do you mean by operational?
Well, what I mean by operational is you got nine of your kids leaving to half the class to go to band. That's a problem. You have your teacher being-
Should you address that?
You, you have your teacher being pulled out for professional development during class. That's a freaking problem. You have twenty-seven kids in the class. That's a problem. And you have such a diverse population. You have one student who can't read English or Spanish, and he can't speak English, and he sits there-
But answered all the problems and wrote in Spanish, in beautiful handwriting, he pointed out.
Does nothing all day. Nothing. All day.
Why?
Who, wait, who does nothing all day?
The kid who can't read English or Spanish.
I don't know. She just said he read and wrote in English.
No, he was in your group. He wrote in Spanish in the most beautiful handwriting on the paper.
No, 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 no. That's not the kid I'm talking about. That kid was on the other end of the spectrum.
But not a word of English.
Guys, I don't know if this is appropriate to be discussing.
Of course it's inappropriate. You know why? That's why I said to you, I don't wanna get into it. But our superintendent wanted to interrogate me. I'm glad to answer. And my conclusion was what?
Not interrogate.
An operational issue.
A scheduling issue.
No, an operational issue. My exact words to you, as a matter of fact, is we don't know how to run a school. You remember that?
I do. I just wanted to make sure that-
Tom, that's what we're met with every day. You should know that. But, but point of order, can we please get back on track with the, um, I'm not being disrespectful to anyone.
No, listen, point of order, because we're starting to get into things that agitate people. So let's, let's get into the fluff, the nineteen thirty-four Albert Einstein thesis, and, and, uh, let's get over there, because this is real.
Tom, you know what? I was just trying to let you know that this is not any type of new initiative that's just gonna come and go. This is-
E equals MC squared isn't new either.
Exactly. So why do you disagree with the importance of social development?
I, I never disagreed with it. I don't disagree with what Jen's saying. She's an expert in her field. What am I saying?
But you're scared, and you're not looking at this as an, as a, as a way of moving forward.
I'm not saying-
That's what you're not saying, Tom. That's what you're projecting, though.
When I look at that, and I look at some of the operational things that go in the classroom, there's no way that is of any significance compared to what's going on in those classrooms.
So Tommy, if it's operational, what you said, and it does sound like it can be, and it probably is a part of it, what, what-
Think about it, listen.
May, may I speak to that a little bit, Mr. Hennessy?
No, no, because we gotta point of order. We gotta move on.
I wanna hear the operational. Go ahead.
When we are consistent as a district, when our curriculum is vertically and horizontally aligned, then we can work with our principals to help them build their capacity to give feedback to teachers on those operational classroom scheduling, management moves. Because we're all clear on what's expected and what should be vis- visible in the classroom. And that is why we recommend resources and have curriculum in place. And thank you.
That makes sense, so maybe it should be readdressed.
We're back.
Tia said we're back.
Okay, so let's move along to approval of meeting minutes. We have regular meeting from May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, and our special meeting on June first, twenty twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve the regular minutes of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, and the special meeting minutes for June first, twenty twenty-one.
Come here. So we have the motion made by Tom, seconded by Lisa. So I'm gonna ask for a vote of aye, right? All in favor to approve the meeting minutes, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
You didn't ask for any nigg-
Oh, everyone said aye. Everyone said aye. Did anyone, did I miss anyone? I mean, I'm pretty sure everyone said aye, correct?
Do you have to, if everyone said aye, have to rule? No.
No. All right, so next comes the approval of the consent agenda. We have approval for invoices for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of, and mine, it is blank. I don't have a number on my, uh-
Eight seventy-seven, eight forty-one point nine-six.
Okay, as listed by Ms., by Ms. Bovair. Do you have it written?
Purchase overs, over seven thousand.
So eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-six cents, as well as purchase orders over seven thousand. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Any questions, comments? If not, I'm gonna ask for an aye vote. All in favor to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
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 She's three.
There she is.
Any opposed or abstained? Checking, okay. No.
Thank you.
So all in favor, motion carries. That brings us to the audience, audience of citizens portion of this evening. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? Okay, so that concludes our audience of citizens portion of this evening. And we will move along to new business, discussion and possible action on the approval of the assistant teacher contract.
Yes, so the contract, draft contract is in your board packet. This is for an assistant, um, teacher at Overbrook School. Um, uh, it's a replacement. Okay.
I make a motion to approve the assistant teacher contract.
Second. Any questions? If not, I'm gonna ask, um, go ahead and do a roll call vote, Melissa, to approve the assistant teacher contract.
Okay, Tia De Palma?
Yes.
Jennifer Delongo?
Yes.
Lisa Geraci and Estacio?
Yes.
Tom Hennessy?
Yes.
Tom Murtaugh?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Yes.
Aiden, favor, motion carries.
Okay, so it brings us to seven point two, discussion and possible action on the approval of hires, rehires, and stipends. Does anybody have any questions or clarification? Nope? If not, I will ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the list of hires, rehires, and stipends.
Second.
I second it.
Okay.
You can have it.
I do too. We do it together.
All right, so why, why are we, everyone comfortable with doing an aye vote to approve the list of hires, rehires, and stipends? Okay, so at this time, um, motion is to approve the list of hires, rehires, and stipends as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? All in favor, motion carries. So that brings us to discussion and possible action on the approval of six twelve ELA in math intervention positions. Erica?
Yes, so as part of our SR two application, we wrote in three interventionist positions for grades six through twelve. So we can add a math interventionist at the middle school, math interventionist at the high school, and an ELA interventionist at the high school. This will allow us to, um, run some inter- intervention blocks and classes um, in both those locations, in ELA and in math. Currently, the middle school and the high school do not have any interventionists.
Not good.
Not good.
So again, that was written into the S R two grant application and approved by the State Department of Education.
You want a motion?
Yep.
I make a motion to approve the six twelve ELA in math intervention positions.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to comment.
I'd like to comment, too.
This is what, this will help, I hope, Tom, for you to see that those interventionists, if they don't get pulled out of academic classes, that would be ideal. I don't know, we have like a flex period that, so that would be certain days it can be used for this, this, okay? You know what I'm saying? So we, and some kids do, um, you know, it's written into the plan that they miss maybe a certain special, like a semester, a different one, if it's necessary. It's like the six-week programs, like, um, they did at, um, was it Mamawgwin? When they pulled the, the, and gave them that little bit of instruction for the, um, six-week period or five weeks?
The action research that they did?
Yeah. You do see those small group, we, we call, um, we use a certain system, um, but it, it, you see growth in that. I, I was one of the ELA, um, small group, real small group during flex, and I miss it terribly this year. I saw so much growth in those kids from last year up until we left, and it was just so, it was great to see, because it really helped them, and it, it reviewed the certain phonics. It took them right where they were in their reading, and small group, no more than four, no more than five in a group, but usually four. Four days of intense instruction, certain amount of time, move up, move up, you continue to test, and you watched and saw the growth. Done with fidelity, it can happen. And that's what the interventionists are able to do, right?
Yeah.
That's right.
And Jen, Jen built in a, a little bit of a system within our curriculum and a performance matters database that is going to help with, um, screening and then progress monitoring, but with a bank of resources to provide those interventions in the small group setting over the course of the six weeks while you're progress monitoring until you reassess.
So that at any time, teachers that are classroom teachers of that student, or anyone in Bob's office, or myself, if we were wondering how, what's the efficacy of that intervention, or how those groups are doing, um, we can monitor that. Teachers can just track attendance and, and performance and their progress monitoring in the system, as well as have a bank of resources to pull as a drop-down menu to say, if this is the type of profile that the student may struggle with decoding, for example, this would be the recommended intervention, and this is how you might run a six-week cycle of that in our curriculum management system. So we have a lot of things in place that I think should make it really turn key for the teachers to then really focus their attention on meeting the needs, and then reflecting on how the student performed in that six-week cycle. And then hopefully, the ideal is that they move on to the next higher level skill-
Yes.
-after that six-week cycle has demonstrated improvement in that area.
And as they master skills, the trend line goes, goes up, but it's really important to know if we have these positions, because we have to schedule accordingly and make sure the kids have the time in their schedules and their blocks to, um, be seen and intervened by the interventionists.
Erica, this isn't all the, um, the hires for summer, right? For the summer school?
Some of them were previously reported, I think.
The interventionists? They are, wouldn't be on the hires, cause this is, these are new positions, so I'm asking the board for approval of these new positions, and then we would post them, and when we fill it, they'd come on the hire sheet.
No, I was, didn't, was, well, we got, I just asked if this was all the hires for the summer. We're still, there's still additional hires that are not on here, right?
It may have been previously reported.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we had a large amount last, of coordinating for the E S Y program.
I misunderstood.
I said, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Tom said you wanted to say something.
Tom?
So I voted no for all these positions, if you noticed the last few meetings. It's because I don't, I don't know, maybe I missed it, but I haven't, I don't understand the big picture. You see, every meeting, we get spoon-fed a couple pieces of the picture. And there was an email today from a parent, and it, and she was saying the same thing that I'm thinking. So that's why I'm voting no, because I don't, I don't get the big picture. I don't understand it.
So maybe-
What did the parent say?
Suggest to, um, meet with, I'm gonna suggest Jen or somebody, right, Jen? That, that, so she can understand, or help you understand these interventionists. They are so important-
I don't need to understand the interventionists.
Well, you just said, maybe I don't understand.
I need to understand the big picture. Are we gonna get two more jobs next week, and three more jobs the week after that? What's going on? How many jobs are we filling? What's the final product look like? That's what I'm wondering. And I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna tell you something. I'm not a teacher, as you've pointed out many times, Tia.
I don't own a fuel company, and I-
If I had one choice as a teacher, I'd want smaller class size. And I'd want after-school programs, summer school, and a longer school day.
I want all that too.
I don't know if I would want these high-level administrative coordinators telling me what to do every day, but I've never taught in a school, so-
That's not an intervention, an interventionist-
I'm just telling you. I'm just telling you. That's why I'm voting no for all this stuff. I don't see where it fits in the grand scheme of getting the eight out of ten, maybe down to five out of ten. And I gotta tell you, that parent that wrote the email today, said the same thing.
I can agree with you in so many aspects of what you're saying, that, you know, maybe every position's not needed, but you gotta remember, every child is not the same, and there's, could be that one child that's in such need in one area that-
I don't deny that.
That individual cannot, cannot cater to, or not provide the necessary tools that child may need, and that other position might be able to do that.
I don't deny that.
I'm not saying we need to go and hire ten people for one position. I agree with you on that.
Is it ten? Is it twenty?
Maybe it's twenty.
Is it thirty?
Maybe it's twenty. I agree with you, but-
Every week it's more, I know that.
Tom, we have a large school, we have a, we have a good-sized school system.
Some of this I agree with Tommy, but I was saying-
Every meeting it's more, that's all I know.
We need to address the child's needs, and that's paramount.
So, Tom, but in, in all fairness, we can have a discussion, but that should go to maybe a, um, a, a discussion in, in, um, a subcommittee or something, because right now, it's up here for that. I understand your point, but a teacher in heterogeneous classes, which are mostly all of our classes, you don't have every single student. Whole group instruction is gone.
It is?
Technically. It pretty much is. You need to have small group, your children need to be advocated, need to be working and applying the skills that a teacher is, is presenting every single day. They need time to work together, et cetera. But the kids that aren't, that, all those kids that you said are not reading at level, you, you, no kid is gonna, the whole class, very often, maybe it's in an algebra class, in the AP classes, they're at the same level, but not, not anywhere else.
I think it's important, this is just a sort of a simple thing to kind of bring us back. The intervention positions are, are sort of going back to what I talked about earlier with Tom, that the classroom teacher delivers the instruction, right? So we don't want them to get behind, so we don't want them to get, we, we want them to get the sixth-grade instruction, cause they need the sixth-grade material. Intervention is supposed to support students who may have gaps for various reasons, right? They may lack something they need to then access sixth-grade material, or they may have a specific area, like a decoding or reading fluency, where they need specific support. So the interventionist is different from a classroom teacher, except they're both teachers. One is delivering instruction on the regular tier-one curriculum, others are delivering[1446.91][1446.94]intensive supports that are on a cycle, where we say what the goal is, the, the interventionist delivers these research-based strategies to the student, and we progress monitor every week to make sure the students are meeting their goals, and that requires time and resources of human, human people. So if, if, you know, we have an ELA in math at the middle school and high school, because at the middle school and high school, those certifications are different, and, and you can't intervene in an area with which you're not an expert, right? Cause you can't meet those students' needs necessarily. So we're hoping for those positions to be filled by people who would be highly qualified to provide students who maybe are in a freshman algebra class that are struggling with, you know, very, very targeted needs to meet those gaps. And so that's what those intervention, they're not meant to be some kind of coordinator position. They are members of the team and collaborative members of the team, and we hope that those individuals are accessible to students to provide them with the resources they need. And in some cases, it's, you know, other, other resources as well, um, social studies or study skills, um, but we want to have the highest-trained people to help students who are struggling in those areas.
But you, you primarily would focus on the, the reading and the math, because you have to read and, you know, compute in those other subjects as well. I mean, I don't know that you're gonna have a social studies interventionist.
No, but you could, you would intervene with language arts generally.
Yes, that's what I mean.
So you would, we often find, an, an ELA person is well-equipped to support a student who has a decoding or reading fluency difficulty, or some kind of difficulty taking notes or understanding, processing information. There are specific, you know, in our drop-down menu, we have specific strategies that you might use to help a kid retain information, or to help a student read material.
Similar to how an ESL teacher would work with a second language learner, or a special ed teacher would support a student with an I E P.
I hope no one here thinks I'm disputing the need for an interventionist.
Are the, when they go to the interventionist-
So I don't understand the big picture. I don't know, maybe you guys told us, and I wasn't here in a meeting? I don't know.